Hello, I am Susannah Sheehan, the editor of the Duxbury Clipper. I want to thank all of our candidates for coming to this Candidates Forum, which is a new and exciting collaboration with the Clipper and PAC TV, the local provider for government access programming. I will be moderating this forum along with Phil Thorne, a Duxbury resident, and Mary McKenzie, the Clipper's education reporter. Let me explain the format. Tonight, we will be talking with the four candidates for school committee. The candidates will be introduced in alphabetical order. They will have two minutes to introduce themselves and speak about who they are and why they are running for this elected office and what their qualifications are. Each candidate will then be asked four questions. Each person gets the same questions. They will have two minutes to answer the questions. The moderator reserves the right to ask a follow-up question. This question will be posed to each candidate, who will have one minute to answer. This will not be a debate. It is a chance for the candidates to let voters know who they are and where they stand on certain issues. Ready to begin? For our school committee candidates, we have Mrs. Julia Adams, Mr. James Burke, Mrs. Shannon Moser, and Mrs. Colleen Slocum. Thank you all for coming. Mrs. Adams will introduce herself first, then Mr. Burke, then Mrs. Moser, and then Mrs. Slocum. We will then rotate the order of who answers questions. Mrs. Adams, you have two minutes for an introduction. Please note, we are keeping time, and we'll ask our candidates to stop speaking if they go over their allotted time. You may begin.
Great, thank you. My name's Julia Adams. I have two children attending Duxbury High School. My daughter, Lila, is in 12th grade, and my son, Rufus, is in 11th grade. Because of them, I'm a soccer mom, a music mom, and a basketball mom. I was raised in Brookline, Massachusetts, and currently, I work as an English teacher in adult education programs in Brockton and Plymouth. I also work to support the schools here in Duxbury. I'm a parent representative on the Duxbury High School School Council, and have been for three and a half years. I'm also a parent representative on the District Curriculum Committee, and the High School Curriculum Overview Committee, and Handbook Review Committee. My work supporting Duxbury schools follows on from 10 years as a school governor at two elementary schools near our former home in Buckinghamshire, England. Like a school committee member, a school governor has responsibilities for monitoring the quality of teaching and learning, overseeing school development plans and budgets, and recruiting and managing the performance of school administrators. So I've been working to support public schools for well over a decade, and I've done that because I firmly believe that a good education is the most powerful gift that we have to offer our children. And I would like to serve on Duxbury School Committee because I understand that it takes sustained effort to ensure that our schools provide an appropriate, high-quality education to all of our children. I believe that I have the relevant skills and experience to contribute effectively to Duxbury School Committee in coming years. I'm a parent, a taxpayer, a practicing teacher, and a former school governor, so I'm accustomed to looking at schools from different perspectives. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams. Now, Mr. Burke, please introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
Good evening, thanks for having me. My name is James Burke, and I'm a Duxbury resident of 24 years, who is really passionate about creating the greatest educational experience possible for our students. And tonight, I'd like to do three things. One, tell you a little bit about who I am and my background. Number two, I'm going to tell you a little bit about why I decided to run. And number three, how I can help the Duxbury educational system. I came to Duxbury in the spring of 1984, a long time ago. I was taken with the beauty of the town, the people, the community, and certainly the schools. As a matter of fact, I made a promise to myself that I would return and live in Duxbury after college. I graduated from Bryant University with concentrations in computer science and mathematics, and went to work for a Fortune 500 company in Boston. While working there, something amazing happened, the Internet. And I became totally enthralled with technology and all that it could offer. I went from the Fortune 500 company to a small technology company in Cambridge, where I learned two things. One, about the entrepreneurial culture, and two, deepened my love for technology. And that really was a springboard for me in a number of ways. It really led me to start two companies. The first I did in Boston, which I grew from zero to a multimillion-dollar company, and then I left there after selling it and starting a second company, which I run today. And running these companies taught me two things. One, the value of having a fantastic culture, number one, and two, how a value set can really help identify who your employees are and help them move forward. So what caused me to run was the fact that I have three sons that are in the Duxbury school system. One is graduating this year, the second is a sophomore in college, and the third is in high school. And I've seen two things happen. One is that there has been a real change in the cultural shift in the schools, and I think we need to work on that. And two, by seeing my wife as a teacher in the Duxbury school system, we need to support our teachers as best we can.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Thank you very much. Next is Mrs. Moser. It's your turn to introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Shannon Hall-Moser, and I'm running for Duxbury School Committee because I'm deeply committed to our public education system. I attended Duxbury Public Schools K through 12, and graduated from the high school in 1991, where I was a varsity athlete on both the girls' swim team and golf team. After high school, I graduated from Harvard College and the University of Virginia School of Law. My husband and I moved back to Duxbury with our family because of the caring community and the great schools. While growing up here in Duxbury, my parents, Judy and Howard Hall, and their generation provided a strong example of community involvement, and I believe it is now my turn to pay it forward and to help ensure the ongoing quality of Duxbury's public education. I have been involved in Duxbury's Special Education Parent Advisory Council, the CPAC, since returning to Duxbury, and I'm in a leadership role for the past year as the current chairperson. I work with school personnel and parents from all four schools to advise the school committee on broad curriculum developments, as well as special education issues. I also recently served as a member of the Selection Committee for the Director of Special Education. Over the past 14-plus years, I've worked as an attorney at law firms in Washington DC and a pharmaceutical company in Denmark. My practice has focused primarily on negotiating and drafting contracts and managing complex litigation matters. I draw upon these professional skills to examine issues from every perspective and to build positive collaborative working relationships with all stakeholders. I look forward to expanding my efforts on behalf of our students and families, as well as the broader community. I want to continue Duxbury's tradition of educational excellence while working to increase opportunities and inclusion for all students, at the same time acknowledging the importance of fiscal responsibility. I believe in the education of the whole child, and that the role of public educators in providing social emotional supports is increasingly important in order to maximize our students' progress and to address the ever-increasing levels of anxiety and stress faced by our students at every age level.
Thank you, Mrs. Moser. And now, Mrs. Slocum, please introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
Hi, my name's Colleen Horgan-Slocum. I'm running for school committee as a lifelong resident of Duxbury. I am passionate about our towns and schools. As a mother of three and an aunt to eight students in the schools, my concerns, interests, and involvement in our schools continue to grow. As a 1984 graduate of Duxbury High School, I am proud of the educational opportunities Duxbury has provided me and my family. I'm running for school committee in a hands-on, relevant way to give back to my community and make a real difference for our students. My children's progress through the school system, currently, Cole's in grade nine, Kyle -- Cole is in grade five, Kyle is in grade nine, and Kayla is in grade 12. It provides me with broad, practical knowledge of our schools individually and our school system as a whole. Growing up and attending school in Duxbury from first grade through high school garners me a unique perspective on where the schools have come from and where they need to go in the future. I want my children and yours to make broad educational strides towards success. My community involvement and experience includes Duxbury High School Handbook Review Committee, Duxbury Facts Policy Subcommittee, Council on Aging, Fundraising, and Recruitment Committee Member, Duxbury Boosters for the last three years, Duxbury Football Combine Chairperson, Duxbury Gridiron Club, Duxbury Cheerleading. I'm also a CCD teacher and a volunteer for Duxbury Baseball. And I've also been a volunteer in every single classroom in every single grade for all my children. Above all, I believe in fairness, balance, and respect. I believe in a school system that strives to excel while meeting the needs of all students and the fiscal expectations of our taxpayers. I believe all schools should teach, educate, and inform, and demonstrate a respect for parents, students, and staff. I believe in honest, open, respectful communication, and I look forward to representing the residents of Duxbury with a particular focus on balancing the needs, priorities of our children and families with those of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Slocum. Now it is time for the first question. Phil Thorne will be asking the first two questions of the candidates. We are proceeding in alphabetical order with the second candidate, and we'll rotate like this through the forum. Mr. Burke, you will answer first. Please remember that you have two minutes to respond. Phil?
Thank you, Susannah. Mr. Burke, the recent trend in the annual school budget has been towards increased spending to provide technology in the classroom. No one would argue against the importance of technology in education. However, is increased technology spending taking focus and funding away from the time-proven basics? For example, the long-term benefit of lower student-to-teacher ratios at the elementary level?
That's a great question, and one that I'm really passionate about. My background is in technology, and through the years, working with groups such as Apple and Google, I've seen the benefits of technology from a socialization standpoint and also a teaching standpoint. Now, you ask a good question. Are we waiting too much on the technology side and taking away from the teacher contact that the students have in the classroom? And I think it's this. I think we have implemented a lot of great technology in the school classrooms, but I really wonder how much support we've given our teachers to really learn how to use the technology and how it can benefit the students. This is something that needs to be implemented over time, in a real thoughtful way. And I think knowing our teachers, and knowing that it really starts from the classroom up and not from the technology down, that the teachers will, in fact, figure out a way to use the technology effectively and as a way to bring this personalized learning to our students. Because we all know that students all learn differently between audio, video, and things of that like. So I don't think you can spend enough when it comes to innovation. Where I really think we need to take our time is to ensure that it's implemented properly in a way that is understood by both the teachers, the students, and certainly the parents.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Now it's your turn, Mrs. Moser. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I think that technology is extremely important. As somebody who's hiring kids coming out of college, it's important that our kids get a leg up on that. I do think that it needs to be balanced, and the implementation, I agree with Mr. Burke that the implementation needs to be done carefully and with good consideration for And that the teachers need the support to make sure that they're getting the training that they need. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Moser. Mrs. Slocum, you're next.
I believe technology is very important, and it is an amazing learning tool. The teachers do need -- the students tend to catch on a lot quicker than the students on all the new technologies, and it would be great to continue to have continuing education for them so that they can be ahead of the curve. It's very important to remember that, you know, students learn differently. There's different learning types, and some people don't learn well. You know, they're more tactile learners than nature, learn by doing. And, you know, a science experiment may look completely different when you're doing it yourself than when you're watching a video on, you know, your computer. So we need to definitely have a balance between both technology and traditional learning methods. I also believe that the younger grades, it needs to be implemented in a slower, more controlled pace. And then, when they get their own computers, each year, they need to learn a little bit more what to do. And also, when they're younger, concerns about safeguards and what they are seeing on their computers, especially the ones that have been given to them and that are, you know, in their rooms. And parents, it's also a great thing for parents to have, you know, a very -- a big class on how to keep our kids safe. But I think it's the way of the future, and there's just lots of pieces to this moving puzzle that we're, you know, moving towards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Slocum. Mrs. Adams, it is your turn.
Thank you. Well, as you know, Duxbury High School introduced -- and Middle School introduced a one-to-one laptop program. It's in its second year. It usually takes three to five years for such a program to really begin to show dividends in terms of children's learning, because there is a learning curve for the teachers. And as far as school committee is concerned, it seems that their role in monitoring the impact of the one-to-one program on learning is to keep watching what's happening in terms of professional development for teachers and in terms of learning outcomes for students to make sure that that big investment we made in technology is actually paying the dividends where we intended to pay. From a budgetary standpoint, which is the other aspect that school committee is involved in, Duxbury fortunately is in a relatively strong position financially. The tax rate in our town is relatively low compared to other districts, and our per-pupil spending is also relatively low compared to state average. So we have been managing the budget pretty sensibly. Teachers are indeed a priority. We do need to remember that teaching and learning are social interactions; they're not interactions with machines. But Duxbury is in a position to maintain its ability to recruit and retain top teachers. Going forward, we'll just have to be very conscientious about how we spend our money on capital improvements to the infrastructure to make sure that our technology investment remains current as the industry advances. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams. Next is question number two. Mrs. Moser, we will start with you. Several years ago, Duxbury made the controversial change to school start times. At the same time Duxbury was considering this change, other communities in Massachusetts were as well. Very few of those other communities have followed Duxbury's lead. Would you be willing to examine the current model to ensure the health and academic needs of all Duxbury students are being met? Now it's your -- oh, excuse me. Mrs. Moser, the question is for you.
Okay. Thank you. And the question's about the current school start time, and the change was made several years ago. Yes, I think it's a good idea to always check in after a significant change like that is made, and to get input from all stakeholders to see, is it working and is it achieving the objectives that were originally aimed for by that change? So I think, you know, there's quite a lot of study out there that, you know, high school students need a lot more sleep, and I've heard that our test scores have increased since the change was made. But I also know that there are concerns in the lower schools about the bus schedules. So I think it would be -- it's a good time. I don't think it's been reexamined. I think there's always a good -- it's always good to reexamine these changes.
Thank you, Mrs. Moser. Mrs. Slocum, the question is for you. Would you like me to repeat it for you?
If you would, that would be great.
Very good. Lost my spot, I apologize. Several years ago, Duxbury made the controversial change to school start times. At the same time Duxbury was considering this change, other communities in Massachusetts were as well. Very few of those other communities have followed Duxbury's lead. Would you be willing to examine the current model to ensure the health and academic needs of all Duxbury students are being met?
I think it's always, like Shannon said, a good time to check back in and see how it's working for everybody. I believe, in the long run, the change helped the high school students and the middle school students. It doesn't seem to be detrimental to them. There are still concerns that the youngest, well, the Alden students, the three through five, are getting on the bus still very, very early. And it's often dark when they get on the bus, and there are a few safety concerns that may be able to be looked at, and the schedules managed better. There's a big switch between when you leave Chandler School, where you're getting on a bus at nine, and you move on to Alden School, and you're getting on a bus at seven, which does create stress. I think that there might be more of a scheduling issue between those two schedules that could make it so that the Chandler School children either get on the bus a little earlier and a little bit later getting on at Alden. So there's less of that, you know, getting on in the dark. And the Chandler School kids get out very late, and they don't get as much playtime. And we know in those younger grades, that free play after school outside is very important to their well-being. It's a good time to check back in, see how everybody else feels, and maybe just an adjustment in those two lower grades might be a -- it might be a good time to look at that, to make those times just a little bit better for those two grades as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Slocum. Mrs. Adams, would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, that would be fine. Thank you.
Happy to do it. Several years ago, Duxbury made the controversial change to school start times. At the same time Duxbury was considering this change, other communities in Massachusetts were as well. Very few of those other communities have followed Duxbury's lead. Would you be willing to examine the current model to ensure the health and academic needs of all Duxbury students are being met?
Great, thank you. Well, I think, as a member of school committee, I think one is always wanting to revisit decisions to see what their impact is. So of course, I would be interested to try to evaluate what the impact has been. The problem, in a kind of logistical sense, is that there are many things happening at our schools all the time which affect or have influence over quantitative measures of student performance and student well-being. So it's difficult to attribute, for example, improving SAT scores at the high school to later start times, because there are other influences acting there. But generally, the feedback from the students at the high school and the middle school has been that the later start times are conducive to better kind of satisfaction with their school experience. And if we were to go back against what the students are saying, I would be concerned about that. But school start times are interwoven in a network of other kind of logistical decisions to do with bus arrangements, and after-school sports, and teacher contracts, and there are many dimensions to the issue. So it's well worth revisiting, but any alteration would be -- would involve a long consultation, in my view. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams. Mr. Burke, the question is for you. Would you like me to repeat it?
No, I'm fine, thank you. I appreciate it. You know, I think when we reevaluate something, we also need to understand what were the original outcomes. There was an intent for the time of the school change, and at that point in time, how were we going to measure against it, and what outcomes were we seeking? So if we were going to go back and revisit it, we would really need to understand why we're doing that. Now, I think if you talked earlier about the schools that were hesitant to follow suit from Duxbury, I think you're starting to see now that they are starting to follow suit. You know, towns like Boston have revisited and are making changes themselves. So, you know, if we take a look at the high school level, certainly the data backs the fact that the teenagers do need more sleep. Having three teenagers that benefited from the change of time and start time, it's been a very positive thing for our family. Now, as you go down to Alden and you look at Chandler with the earlier start times, and I can see, as one of my colleagues said, that, you know, the earlier start times for some of these kids, it's dark outside. You know, we look back to last winter, and the snow's four feet high, and we're worried about our kids, and the bus is coming. So I think, back to the point, that if we look at our original intent, figure out what the outcomes were for this original intent, measure against it to see whether we need to revisit or not, we'll determine whether or not we made the right decision. So let's look at the data first and then decide later. Thank you.
Now for questions three and four. We will have the Clipper's education reporter, Mary McKenzie, asking the questions. Mary?
Mrs. Slocum will begin. A lingering request for funding for an adjustment counselor at Chandler School has not been able to be addressed in the coming year budget. If you were elected, what would you propose to address this need, and how would you do so?
I believe, after actually speaking to Dr. Tantillo and listening to the guidance presentation, that there is a need at the school for that new position, and it would help the children and the families. I definitely have to look at where the money would come from. I don't have that information in front of me right now. But I'm sure we could find somewhere that we can come up with that money, because I know that it is a very important issue in that one particular school, that they would -- they really feel the need for it after listening to, like I said, the guidance presentation. And we need to fill a need that's important to our children and our families.
Thank you. Now, Mrs. Adams, you may answer the question. Mrs. Adams, would you like me to repeat it?
Yes, that would be nice. Thank you.
Okay. A lingering request for funding for an adjustment counselor at Chandler School has not been able to be addressed in the coming year budget. If you were elected, what would you propose to address this need, and how would you do so?
Well, I think from the point of view of school committee, if we don't have the resources in the current budget to add a member of staff at Chandler, then we'd have to examine other alternatives for addressing the problem. It's not entirely clear, from listening to Mrs. Dembowski present about the need for a guidance counselor at Chandler, exactly what the scope of the needs are for the students. It sounds as if it comprises both children who are having difficulty entering school, first entry to school, and children who are having difficulty in the classroom managing their behavior in the classroom. So I think it would be productive for a school committee to gain a good understanding of what the needs are and what other staff might be available within the school to try and address that need on an interim basis while the funding is not there. It's also possible that there are professional development opportunities that existing staff could perhaps explore that would help them to address social and emotional needs of children of that age. But that would be my first kind of port of call, would be to try to understand the issues confronting the school first in a clearer way, and then see if there's a workaround until we can, in fact, include funding for that extra staff member. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams. Now it's your turn, Mr. Burke.
Yeah, thank you.
Would you like me to repeat?
No, I'm good, thank you. The, you know, this particular time in a young person's life is very important. And I think Julia hits on a good point. You know, we would need to understand what is the basis for this request, why do we need it, and what's the value of it. And I think if you take a look at the emotional needs of these kids, I think it's going to be extremely important to see if this one person can affect so many young lives that the fact that teachers within their classrooms can have more of an opportunity to teach to the young kids. And I do think something else that's very important, if there is a need for this, there are so many talented teachers at that level, and there's so many talented administrators at that level. I do think we need to try to find a stop-gap measure to try to put somebody in place to handle the issues that are going on now, and really seek to get the funding within the school to be able to fill that need. I think it's an important one. I really do.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Now you may answer next, Mrs. Moser.
Thank you. It sounds like we're all in agreement that the social-emotional needs of our younger kids need to be addressed, and it's an important issue. I agree with Julia that we need to better understand what the need is exactly, given that we don't have the funding for the new adjustment counselor, and try to address it in other ways. Perhaps giving our teachers additional tools that they can use to address the needs on a day-to-day basis while we work with the superintendent and the manager, the business manager, with regards to the funding. Thank you.
Thank you. As DHS opens up its curriculum to prepare kids for college or career with programs like Time and Tides and more business-related coursework for upper-class men and class women, what would you like to see added to the curriculum to give more students a good footing for the world outside of high school? Mrs. Adams, you are first.
Well, as you mentioned, Time and Tides is a pilot, well, we hope is going to be a pilot program at the high school, which is an interdisciplinary program combining all science and English and history and math around a kind of broad topic related to science and English and history and math around a kind of broad topic related to Duxbury and Duxbury's history and Duxbury's location. That type of curriculum innovation is very useful for allowing students to understand the linkages across subject disciplines. And certainly that is the type of linkage that we want our students to be making, because it prepares them for being flexible in their careers. What the consensus seems to be about career, the future of our high school students' careers is that those students will have to be flexible, that their futures will not be obtaining a job in one industry and remaining in that company or that industry for the rest of their career. They will need to be able to take their knowledge and apply it in different situations. And that's, Time and Tides is a good preparation for them. But in the existing curriculum, there is more and more focus on applying knowledge in new subject area, or new, new ways, so, within each of the subject areas. That's a focus of Common Core. And we're seeing our teachers try to enable students not only to accumulate information but to, and to apply it in distinct ways within the classroom, but also to see linkages to other applications and to use higher-order thinking skills. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Adams. Now it's your turn, Mr. Burke.
Please repeat the question.
All right. As DHS opens up its curriculum to prepare kids for college or career with programs like Time and Tides and more business-related coursework for upper-class men and class women, what would you like to see added to the curriculum to give more students a good footing for the world outside of high school?
Yeah, great question. As an employer of young people, people right out of college, interns for the summer, both at the high school and the college level, I think there are two important things we need to have our students do. Number one, we need to ensure that they can communicate. They need to be able to speak well. They need to be able to write well, because the first judgment you have in young people is how well they can speak or write. It really gives insights into potentially, you know, their upbringing and really their ability to, to do the work. The second thing is, we need to teach our kids to problem solve. And problem solving is a lot of things, but they need to be able to make mistakes, they need to understand how to get solutions to particular problems, they need to understand how to creatively solve those problems. You know, if we can, if our students leave Duxbury High School and they can communicate and they can creatively problem solve, they'll be well off regardless of what career that they want to take. So everything that we do for this extension of the curriculum should be around those two areas, because they'll be the most important two things that, that they, that they take away from our school.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Now it's your turn, Ms. Moser.
Thank you. I think in terms of opening up the curriculum and what will best prepare our children for what lies ahead after high school, I think interpersonal skills are extremely important. I think learning how to work in a collaborative environment with people from all different backgrounds is important. The high school has taken recent steps to unlevel some of their English classes, so our children have more options in English that weren't previously available to them. And they'll be in classrooms with kids with different abilities. And I think that's a fantastic example of what we can do to encourage our children that, you know, in the world outside of Duxbury High School, they're going to be working alongside people with all different backgrounds, different cultures, different abilities. And what we can do to foster that within our school would be a huge asset for them going out into the larger world. I think, you know, practical skills, I think my, the class that I, actually helped me the most from high school was typing. I mean, things like that, you know, when you hit the ground running, it's important to offer those to our kids as well. So I think those, you know, collaborative team-building focus, giving kids a chance to work across the spectrum in terms of what, you know, different abilities and interpersonal skills. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moser. Colleen Slocum?
I think opening up the curriculum to different types of things is incredible for the kids. Some of the things that I'd like to see as children move on into college and past college that they don't get currently right now is some real-life skills in that they, you know, financial skills, how to manage money, how to save money, how much things cost. In growing up, you know, and watching the kids around town, they don't get it. And we want to make sure that they have those skills as well when they go off to college so that they don't get in any financial trouble, they understand how much a loan is and how much, how long it takes when they, to pay off when they're making those financial decisions for themselves, hopefully with the help of their parents. But, you know, it's really important when they're on their own to have that. How much life costs, I think, is a really, really important class to teach them on their way out the door, as well as all their, you know, their, all their skills, their communication skills, their ability to be flexible, and their abilities to work with other people are all great things that we can add to the curriculum.
Thank you very much. This concludes our school committee candidates forum. I thank all of you very much for participating in this, and I wish you the best of luck at the town election. For replay dates and times, please visit PAC TV. Thank you.